Okay, thank you. Good evening for everybody who's participating and listening to this later. This is a work session of the Marquette Township Board. Today is Tuesday, June 6, 2023, and it's just 6:00 PM. This is not a special meeting, so there will be no motions tonight. It's just a work session with conversation. And the main topic is information exchange with Michigan House Rep. Jen Hill. And we appreciate you being here, Jen. I'd like to introduce my board, because I don't know how many of these folks you've seen or know. To my immediate right is trustee Dan Everson.
Raise your hand, so she can see it, yeah.
And trustee John Marks.
Raise your hand.
So she can see you. Treasurer Ernie Johnson. And I'm in the middle. And then clerk Randy Retary. Trustee Linda Winslow. And trustee Carl Kida. And what I'd like to do is, you did receive kind of a loose agenda of items that we were, had been talking about. So I thought if you, and if you want to introduce your staff member, could tell us maybe what items you know about, or don't know about, or don't want to talk about, or liked, or have lots of information on, we could pare the list down, if that works for you.
Yeah, I, could you drop the list in the chat? That would be easier. I've got, I only have my small laptop, so I'm afraid I can't, I don't have a lot of screen real estate. If you wouldn't mind putting that in the chat.
Jennifer, do you have that?
I got you.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
So this is my indistrict, this is constituent services person, Jennifer Figler, even though it says Jen Hill on her as well, because she's logged in, we're both logged in on our state account. And I'm pulling up the chat. Yeah, so, yeah, thank you for your time, everyone, and thank you for working on this Zoom. This really helps me be able to spend and work directly with local elected officials like you. As a former Marquette City Commissioner, I really value your, you know, your, where, as I say, but it's true, it's where the rubber hits the road, is certainly in local government. And I'm really glad to talk about what you're concerned about. I see two other cameras on my Zoom, this is Reg Durant and Lenny.
Lenny is our superintendent of public works, Jen.
Ah.
And we do have, well, yes, my husband asked for the link, and we do have two people in the audience, I don't know if you can see them.
I cannot, but that's okay. Oh, I see, oh, yep, I see someone leaning over. Hi. Very cool.
We do, we still can allow public comment, so I didn't know if either of them wanted to say anything. Do you want to, okay, they don't want to say anything, so.
Okay. Yeah, so on the question of, so I see maintaining local control, the proposed excise tax for tourism, tax tribunal decisions, and the Senate bills 19 and 20. And then is that scheduling, is that, I'm not sure whether it's on the bottom, Jen Figler, is that?
That was a scheduling contact, it got cut off, but it was.
Oh, I see, oh, yeah, okay, I scrolled down. Road funding, staggered board terms with no party affiliation at township level, maintaining local control, okay. Now I see the whole thing. Again, sorry, I apologize, I've got this little screen.
Yeah, that's okay.
So road funding.
I'm sorry, the other thing we wanted to kind of add would be an election update, if you have anything on that, we didn't know how timely you would, if you want to cover that first, because that's kind of timely.
Yes. So, in fact, this morning, I co-signed, excuse me, I signed as a cosponsor of the multiple bill package to implement Prop. 2. So there's a whole, so those will have bill numbers as of tomorrow. And then I can share them with you. But they are the policies and procedures to meet the requirements as were voted in by the citizens of Michigan under the Proposition 2. The presentation we had from Secretary Benson herself, two weeks ago, said that she, there's $48 million for local governments to implement the procedures, and an additional approximately $40 million for state support to implement. That's all in discussion. So on the budget side, we expect to have the budget by, by the end of June. So that's all on time, as far as I've heard so far. Though the House has passed out its budget, the Senate passed out its budget, the governor has her recommendation. And we took the votes today to trigger the conference committee. So the conference committee will start meeting tomorrow between the Senate and the House and government, and the governor's representation. So that process will be finished, like I said, by the end of June. There is money allocated, and I would stay in touch with your, the Clerk's Association on where that negotiation stands. In terms of the policies and procedures, Secretary Benson let us know that there are going to be three different ways of managing the extended voting period, and to give people flexibility to meet their needs. And then there's, as I said, the money to help implement it. And when those bills are public tomorrow, I'll share them with you. But the, the goal is to have the flexibility for small townships to be able to work together with other townships and with their county to implement these matters, because it is, it's well-understood that many people work part-time in these roles, and we need to therefore be as flexible as possible. There's also money to do things like, I don't know if you would need additional drop boxes or things like that, there is funding set aside for that as well. Any other, any particular questions you'd like me to bring back regarding the voting?
Anything special, Randy?
No, I think, I think that's good, Jen, and I know we'll get an update from Secretary of State when you guys are done with your bills, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I just, I know everyone is, was working hard to negotiate what this would all look like, so it, it wasn't, it wasn't, we've been working on it all the way through, it just took till now to get those, those ideas settled. But yeah, if there's anything you would like me to know, just let me know.
Okay. Are there any, like I said, any of these other items that are kind of small that we, that you would have a quick answer to, in case we want to spend more time?
Well, I'm sorry, that you think I would have a quick answer to?
Yes. Is there any talk about any stager terms at the township level with non-affili, non-partisan affiliation?
Yeah. I haven't heard anything about that. I would, my first call would be to Judy Allen with the Township Association, who I've gotten to know, have a good relationship with her, because I am on local government. We, do you, I can, so I can ask her about that?
I know they've sent multiple letters, and they've asked us for our feelings over the years, so I just didn't know if it was something that was dead, or if it's important, or, it's important to us, but, you know.
Yeah. What, and where would you, what would you prefer? That would help me to understand.
The idea that all seven board members come up every four years is kind of institutionally knowledgeable, bad practice, you know? It doesn't, doesn't happen in my recent time, where we'd all leave, but it's possible, and it's kind of scary to think that that would happen.
I feel like that, I've heard about that happening in some other communities.
Especially in a five-member board, yeah. Seven members, it might be a little bit different. And then the party affiliation doesn't really have any importance at this level.
Yeah.
But just put it on a post-it note, maybe, and keep it in the back of your mind, it's not urgent, it's just something we've talked about before.
Yeah, and that, by being on local government, that is exactly the sort of thing we might deal with over time. Thank you.
Okay. The excise tax, maybe for recreation, I know that, I did get some history on that from Judy Allen, and I talked to, I can't think of her name, Catherine, but anyway, at MTA, because we just had our conference down there. And that, that would affect, that would affect Marquette.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, that would affect Marquette with our tourism base expanding in different directions. And I believe it's a, it's a tax that would end up being passed on to the tourist, or the people in the hotel industry. The question becomes, where does that money go? Does it go to the fire department, which is one of the organizations that was supposed to be getting some of the funding? Does it go to the state for distribution? Does it go to the township for distribution? Does it go to the city? Does it go to the travel market? Who gets their cuts, and how is it portioned?
There's, I haven't, I, I haven't talked, I have not heard anything about this being acted in this session, yet. And with the, we've been so busy with, we had to deal with closing the books in the previous session, because they hadn't done that. And then we moved on to our six priority issues. So this, this issue has not come up.
Okay.
Nor has short-term rental. I have heard that, in terms of local control, right? So it's kind of bringing that all together, about taxes, revenue, tourism, short-term rentals, and the aggregate mining. And the aggregate mining bill had a committee hearing, and didn't, and is going, and now the parties have been asked to negotiate among themselves, because there was a lot of differing opinions on that one. And so there's a real push to try to have the parties settle it, because as legislators, we're hearing so many different opinions. And on the excise tax for tourism, I'm hearing absolutely nothing about that. I, we haven't, in the, I do have tourism on the, what's now Natural Resources after Recreation and Tourism Committee. We have been focusing on, again, some bills that had been sort of hanging and waiting for the last session or two sessions, so nothing about that. I would expect that that would be, and I can tell you, there's a municipal caucus, it's bipartisan, and our first agenda item is revenue sharing, and increasing revenue sharing, and in particular, also setting up a trust fund for revenue sharing, so that that money is not going to be, you know, taken away unfairly, as it has been done over the years. So that's the first agenda item for the municipal caucus, and it seems like that's going to happen. That is, that those monies and those funds are inside the current budget. The other priorities, just a second, let me get my paper. The other priorities for municipal were dark stores, and creating a property tax credit for disabled American veterans. So we understanding that the state has, you know, instituted that property tax credit, and it's an unfunded mandate that's been acknowledged. And this is, so this is the caucus speaking here, not one particular party or one particular person. And then even potentially some headly reform, reform to the headly amendment. This is inside the Michigan Municipal League, which I know is often close to the township's ideas and interests, but not always the same. And so those are going to, we're meeting tomorrow afternoon to say, those are proposed for, I should say. So to be clear again, those are proposed, they're not, we're going to make that decision tomorrow of what those would be. And dark stores, disabled American veterans, property, property tax credits, and possible headly reform, and the trust fund for tax revenue sharing. So that's what I'm hearing. And then if we have this bipartisan municipal caucus bringing these ideas forward, we think we might be able to move them more quickly. But we're, we're going to see how that goes, how the conversation goes tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. And you said that there, you haven't heard anything on the short and long-term rentals, as far as?
Right, the folks, no one, I think it's, it's still going to be, it's not like it's gone away exactly, but I think with all the other things we've been working on, it's not been the highest priority.
Okay. So at one point a few years ago, we had a huge meeting here with a bunch of officials all across the county. And we were told at the time that it didn't matter what we had in place, it was going to be illegal to do whatever ordinances and stuff that we were going to try. So I guess we can just kind of keep going.
I will fight that all the way. I will be a consistent and hard no on that, always.
Okay.
That is, now, there are, my understanding is, there's been proposals, say, like on the aggregate mining, where some of the concern, just to pick that one issue, is that certain communities have slow-walked their permitting process on the mines, to the point where they just never said no, but in effect, they were saying no. Like tightening up some of those things, so that there would be an answer, say, in 12, or 18, or 24 months, or something like that. There are, sometimes it's a matter of coming up with a process that then has to be agreed to by the local officials. And then on, like on short-term rentals, it confuses, well, because short-term rentals is, right, is, is the housing, the lack of housing problem is taking housing out of the market. It's also, where's the revenue being raised, and who controls that revenue? And those are, are complex questions that are going to take some negotiation. And so when I say I'm a hard no, I'm not on, like, taking away local control, completely no. But sometimes what needs to be set up is a process, so that it's transparent, who's making the decision and how. Does that, does that make sense?
That makes sense, yep.
Trying to be clear.
Okay. And it could change 180 degrees, from what you're saying now, anyway, in six months or whatever.
Right, because that, yeah, it's, it's, I think we're going to, we have to get through this budget process here in June. And then when we come back in September, is when potentially we're going to be taking on some of these other issues. And I haven't heard, right now, like, there's going to be a whole range of issues, definitely, you know, there's, I mean, it's the whole spectrum, because there's so many different things where people want to make changes from the last, you know, 40 years. And so I would be curious to hear what you would, your priorities would be as township officials.
Sure. Well, that's why we, you know, I put some of the smaller and larger things on here, so you'd kind of have, these are things we've been talking about for the last couple of years, since, you know, you got in and Ms. Cambenci left. I think we'll leave then the tribunal and stuff. I do have a board member who wants to send you some information, so I will get that to you tomorrow, I'll send it to Jennifer. I think the tax tribunal, we could talk about, you know, for a week, and not really cover everything. So I don't want to get into it too much, unless you have something specific to share, because I think you said that it was part of the caucus.
Well, where we are is, I know Senator McBroom has introduced something this term that would go through Circuit Court. What I'm interested, and others in the municipal caucus on the House side are interested in, is a legal solution that cuts off the tax tribunal, cuts it off at the root, doesn't, doesn't force it to go into further litigation, but it would actually make it, make it so they can't claw, you know, they can't clawback the money that they owe. I mean, it's just, and it's, you know, it's a $5.5 million building, and they're saying it's only worth $2.5 million. Like, there's some legal maneuvering going on around the assessment process that makes that legal. Let's change the law, so that they can't do that maneuver. I mean, this is, on the face of it, it makes no, you know, other states have declared this illegal. We're going to find a way to make sure that this gets cut off at the root, rather than forcing it through every circuit court in every county. That's, that's just eating up more of our government resources. And, and what this has done is take millions and millions of dollars out of our local governments. I'm very aware of that as a Marquette City Commissioner. And it absolutely needs to stop. And that's what, this is finding the right legal mechanism to make it stop.
Sure. Yeah, we know we can't go back and, and capture any of those funds that we've already had to pay back, we collectively even, not just the township.
I know, it's absolutely infuriating.
Those, we've said before that we think that the property should be, be put back on the tax rolls the way they were. So whatever legal mechanism, I've had that conversation millions of times with Senator McBroom, of course. We can't, we need to stop the bleeding. Our thought has always been, it's a misinterpretation of the law.
Right.
It's not a loophole.
I agree.
I mean, other than maybe the restrictions, the deed restrictions, that, that might be part of it, but they've just, they've usurped what the assessors are allowed to do. It's just ridiculous, so.
Yep.
Like I said, I don't want to dwell on that too long, but do you have any education update, anything to share that, that was one of the questions, that we were just wondering where we are, if anything's changing, or?
You mean Department of Education, like K-12?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay. Yeah, so there's some really good news in the K-12 budget. They're fully funding special ed, so districts will not have to contribute into the special ed, it'll be covered by federal funds and state funds. That's in the current House budget. There is money for transportation, $150 million, and to begin to have transportation be funded separately out of, out of general fund, recognizing what a drain that's been on general fund over the years. There's an increase in the per-people allotment, and there is an increase, if you were behind on your per-people allotment, there's a catch-up amount as well, it depends on each district, so that's going to look different in different districts. But there was, trying to just make them whole after the cuts that people saw over the years. There's also money for mental health, money for school safety, and just, it's a very, very solid education budget.
Okay.
And again, but we'll see what comes out the other side, there's some sausage-making that's going to happen right now, as we, as we have started the conference committee process, but it's, it's a very, very much, and the other thing, oh, the, as the governor said in the state of the state, that we pay for every school lunch. Just pay for lunch, pay for, and breakfast. So kids, kids can't learn when they're hungry. And while we would like it not to be so, that there's some kind of stigma, there is, and so we're just going to pay for it, and it's $160 million to do this across Michigan. This is certainly an investment in making sure our kids can learn. So that's going to happen, and that's going to happen starting with this summer's funding for this lunch program they offer in the summertime. So we're going to put that money so that it's available, even though the budget starts on October 1st, we're going to make sure there's money for summer feeding, and in September, when school starts, that that will all be covered for, for the school districts.
Okay. So it'll be like it was during COVID for the meal plan?
Right.
So can you, so I think I understand this, so transportation is going to be funded from the state?
Well, not all of it.
Not all of it.
But we're starting, we're starting with $150 million.
We're starting to fund some of it?
Okay.
Because that's been an issue.
And I'm not sure, oh, I'm sorry.
That's been an issue with people who have long bus runs versus short bus runs, and the money's been not spent on educating our children.
Exactly, exactly, recognizing that. I, I do not know off the top of my head what the formula is to determine that allocation, but that, that extra cost has been identified, maybe, Jen, could you? Let's look into that, and make sure we get an information on that, on the question of how they're going to be allocating those rural transportation funds. The other thing that we did, that we did pass, that's already been, that's been made into law, is if you pass a sinking fund, which is capital money, it was previously restricted to buildings, it can now be spent on transportation.
I think the roads are the last, and I was trying to get some information from my manager, he printed out a gas tax, and we were talking before about not all of the road gas tax money goes to roads, some of it goes to the general fund. But I was going to call the county director and see how, how he could explain that.
That was the deal that was struck, back when the governor was first elected, I think in her very first year, or it might have been, it continued, there was, there was a deal struck under the Snyder administration, and a deal struck under the Whitmer, at the beginning of the Whitmer administration, on the road funding and how to, how to address it. It was also part of, I think, the, when we did the insurance deal as well. So where we are now is, is, in the budget negotiations, the formula, the Act 51 is funded, but the problem is, we've just got to have such a backlog of work that needs to be done, that that doesn't cover all the need, because the, all the need is billions. And so there's negotiation on an additional, I've heard 300 million, I've heard 400 million of money to go into local roads, but then it's not going to be run through the Act 51 formula, it'll be done differently, and there's some negotiations happening around that. And I'm certainly advocating that it be done in a way that's fair to rural districts, I'm not sure where that's going to fall out right now. I'm hearing lots of different numbers. So there is going to be that base level of funding that was agreed to in the deal that was struck, whatever, four, five years ago, six years ago, on funding the roads. But I, and so there, and there's certainly been no reduction of any kind. How it's going to be added on to going forward, I'm not sure. It, it's in negotiation, so I just, it's more than, not that I'm not sure, it's that I can't say, because it's still being developed.
So is there any talk about the electric car not contributing then?
There is an understanding, right now, there's still a focus on getting the EV charging network up and running. And the question of how roads are going to be paid for, once EVs are more predominant, is understood to be an important topic, but it hasn't been addressed yet, because we, it's coming, and people recognize it's coming, but that hasn't, we've got to figure out how to get road construction done right now. It's, again, it's just there's so many things on our plate right now, that that's really the focus, is getting the road budget decided for this year, and then... really the focus, is getting the road budget decided for this year. And then, um, the, the work on, on, you know, what it's going to look like as we move to EVs is still under development.
Okay. Let's continue on that.
Great question.
That, on that road a little bit more and talk specifically about our road request that's kind of been bouncing around between here and Lansing with the road commission and the project that we would like to see help with, especially on the safety side of it, on the Forestville, Wright Street Commerce intersection. And your thoughts and, you know, how you can help us try to fix that road and help the whole housing thing at the same time?
Right. Um, and where, that is a separate pot of money that's going to come, well, as it was, as it's been presented right now in the current year, it's, the opportunity to fund that would come through what's called an earmark, which I'm only going to know what that is at the very end of June, when the, when we, when the budget is all, all settled. Then each representative gets told what the potential earmark number is. So I don't know what that number is yet for, for this district. Then, um, it is competing with all the other projects in the district. So there's four counties, the four counties and the townships in the counties have identified what their concerns and costs and issues are. And, um, it is both my honor and my challenge to weigh those different asks from all the different counties and decide, okay, we have this pool of funds that's available, what could possibly be done with it. And that's how I'm going to be looking at it is, there's four counties in the district, many, many townships in the district. And who, and which, you know, my criteria are going to be, it's going to a public purpose. What has been communities that have, there's, is there money available elsewhere to take care of that need? Are these things that are, some of these asks for things that have been going on for more than 10 years, even longer in some cases. And so I'm going to have to think about, uh, which, you know, taking state dollars to help with public needs after years and years and years of disinvestment in this region and how to help address that. Those, that's how I'm thinking about. So I'm not thinking right now, for me, what's most important is the process. I have multiple asks coming to me and then being clear to all of you that that's how I'm going to be making my decision.
Okay. But you're aware of, of the details of the project from the road commission request, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So, so when, when will those decisions be made, Jen?
By the end of April, like I said, excuse me, end of June, end of this month.
Because that's what people are asking us. They want a number.
Yeah, I don't, I literally haven't, I do not know. I will be told a number once the budget is done. Each one of us gets told what our earmark number is.
And then you have, then you have a week or two weeks then to make your decision?
Right.
So there's some kind of a structure here, right? This, 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 and this.
Right. Sometime, when the budget's all done, I'll know what the number is. And then it's going to be a question of looking at all the different requests.
Okay.
And looking at communities that have been underfunded for years and public purpose and public need.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. What questions does the rest of the board have? Go ahead, Ernie.
PFOs, do you remember, excuse me, the forever chemicals?
Yeah.
That's what I'm concerned with. There's just been an article in the paper that there's been a, something in the courts about $1.5 billion or something that's been set aside or been awarded by these companies to, for water. But to me, after attending a session at Michigan Township Association, that's just peanuts as to what's going to be done. And that, we're facing here with the solid waste here locally, a new facility plus additional costs there. And we're going to have to raise our rates here and in the county here, somewhere between, I don't know, eight to $10 a month or maybe more than that. So we're to the point where something's got to be done. And these companies have got to be held accountable for it. And that, the problem is that, in that session, they're looking at many, many of these companies. But the problem is these companies are going to file bankruptcy because there's going to be a cost so great that they're not going to be able to do it. And the only ones that are going to make any money on it are the attorneys who are representing them. So we're sitting back in the, behind the eight ball is what we're going to do and that. And yet we're faced with something that's coming aboard within the next six to eight months that we're going to have to fund. So the state's got to do something because Eagle has indicated that this has to be done and that, with no finances from the state to offset the costs to the local communities and that. So that's my complaint. That's one of them and that.
Well, you're a good township official to be paying attention to these critical, these critical issues. I, I have been briefed, I, on the wastewater treatment issue. I actually had, it was one of the very first meetings I had after I got elected in November. Folks from the wastewater treatment plant let me know, sent me some information. And there's going to be a work session with the wastewater authority next week, week, maybe later this week, I'm going to be talking with them. Yeah, it is, um, right, there's a substantial cost. We are going to hear this week in the Natural Resources Committee, we're in vice chair, we're going to hear the, the polluter pay bill where companies will be held accountable. We're also going to be hearing a bill in committee regarding that we could be stricter than the federal law if we, if we so chose, which may also give us some latitude to seek mitigation or other things, other such recourse to the polluting companies. So we are moving and taking action, particularly on that, the idea of polluter pay, which Michigan had for a very long time and has only recently gotten rid of. So we were, we were a strong economy when we had polluter pay, and I think we can be a strong economy when we bring polluter pay back. There, we're certainly going to hear people talk about how it's going to ruin us, but I'll just remind you that we had it for decades before it was taken away. So to your point of how do we hold people accountable, we're, we're all, I'm literally going to hear a bill about that in committee this week. Now, the cost of PFOs and the tremendous damage it may, it's, and its potential is, is a very serious concern. And, and we're going to be, have to look and be creative on how that's going to work. I'm certainly willing to work with the local governments on how we address the, the cost of building a wastewater treatment plant for the wastewater facility, or the waste management facility. We're going to need to be creative and go after all funding sources, and I'm happy to help with that.
It's good, Beth. I still think that we're a day, day late, a dollar short on everything. This has been going on since the 1940s and that. And I think it was CBS just had a comment on it, I think on June 1st, a big write-up on, on it. And they come out with some very big detail about the companies that knew about it, but they did not say a thing to anybody. And they proved, it was proven that it was harmful to everybody, but they hid the, hid the results and that.
Well, it would really help if you could write those letters of support for polluter pay. There's going to be a huge fight on that polluter pay. And once I get that bill number, well, I have it actually, I can make sure I get that back out to you. Um, what's, Jen, could you make another note on that one, too? On getting the polluter pay bill information to the township, to your, to the, to you, to all of you so that we can, that's certainly, we're going to need all the support. That's going to be a fight to get that passed.
Fine. Thank you. Thank you.
Jen, I was looking, if we can go back to roads for a minute. I was thinking about what you said. Uh, let's say at the end of June, somebody says you've got $20 million to do something with, right?
Well, I was, I mean, I was told to, it probably won't be anything over two.
Oh, okay. Well, to whatever dollar amount.
I don't think it's going to be over two million because there's 110 of us.
Okay. So are you saying that you would use your three, three-point criteria to determine what happens with that funding?
Right.
Is that, okay. So public purpose, other funding sources, and then how long the projects have been waiting? Safety doesn't come into play there at all?
It is, um.
Or where does it weigh, I guess?
They're all, well, the need, I would call need, is, safety would fall under need. There's different.
Okay.
Concerns in different communities.
Okay. So if these, if, if our road project was one of these criteria, if it fell under that in your mind, would you be able to share some of those funds with whatever other concerns you have? Say, say you've got 20 million or 2 million and, and the projects that you feel are important to support total, you know, a million, and you got another million left. Would you be willing to?
I, it's, I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm open. I mean, people have made their suggestions. I have a list. I can't, I, I, it's, they're all on the table.
Okay. Is our project, is our project on the table?
You're on the list. You're one of the projects on the table. Yes.
Okay.
And it's, it's a challenge and an honor to get to help figure out how to allocate these again. Unfortunately, we have so much need because there's been so much underinvestment.
No, I realize that. We've, we've just got a lot of partners here that are concerned, you know, between the city and a couple townships and organizations, nonprofits, tourism, besides the safety issue. So it's not just the township asking.
Yep.
There's a lot more involved.
So we just got the notice that we're going to lose this Zoom call in a few minutes.
Okay. I want to give, I want to give our manager a chance.
We could, we could call back in. We set up a second one for a second hour if you wanted.
Okay.
This has been so good.
I just placed a Google Meet link in the chat. And what I'll do is I'll hold this space here so that everybody can transfer over to that other link. And then I'll close this one down and meet you all over there.
Okay. I want to give our manager a chance to ask questions or make comments, too, because he's been, he's been working the camera.
I only have about one minute.
Okay.
If we can squeeze that in real quick.
That's long enough. Okay.
Representative Hill, thank you for giving us some perspective on, on the challenges you're dealing with as far as all of us needing something, right? We threw you an elephant, not a softball. We get it. Um, it's all, also obviously very, very important to us in the region. So I guess my only request as staff, the, the people that have to try to figure out how to deal with these issues over and over again, which is the same thing as everyone else you're hearing from. If there's any room in there and room for discussion, we're willing to eat this elephant one bite at a time. So please keep that in mind.
Very well said. That is, that is the challenge we're at. Unfortunately, with too many public infrastructure projects is, is exactly that. We're trying to, you know, take on these challenges. And I'm, I, I hope we can find, well, I not just, I, I commit to working towards finding better and longer-term solutions for these challenges because, yeah, our roads are, have been historically underfunded. As you say, the gas tax is likely to start to decrease. And so what are we going to do? And how are we going to find the funds? We got to have functional roads. So I recognize that as a critical infrastructure need and I'm happy to work on those things going forward. I'm not going to kick the can down the road or say that, you know, this is, and we have to come at it from a rural perspective with the miles of roads that we have, the winters that we have, the population that we have.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Real quick?
I just want to say thank you for your time again.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
This is going to be awful.
Thank you.
You want to say something, Joe?
Yeah. I'd like to give our state representative a new talking point that might be useful. Every time we bring up the dark store issue, it's an issue that affects every community in the Upper Peninsula. I know you know that. I know you, you're well aware of it. And I thank you for your input so far. But I'd like to give you a new talking point. And to do that, I'd like to walk through one more time what's wrong with what's going on. And if I could, I've written something, I will hand it to you.
Send it to her.
Okay. I'm going to read it quickly because I think it's important that the public knows that the new talking point is important. Dark store tax decisions are damaging our communities, all of them. We need to stop the bleeding, and that's what this message is about. It's a scam, a higher tax break for multi-billion dollar corporations given by the Michigan Tax Tribunal decisions. The dark store tax policy that they have accepted bleeds millions of dollars each year from Michigan communities. The tax tribunal decision allows business to pad their bottom line by pulling money from the public treasuries.
That's right.
At the same time, and here's the new talking point, at the same time, businesses are permitted to insure the same property that they went to the tax tribunal with for more than the amount set by the Michigan Tax Tribunal. That's not fair play.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's a new argument that ought to be known and shared with your fellow legislators.
That's a great point. Thank you. I, you know, I have not heard that before, and I will certainly be bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
What else? Anything else? Karen, did you want to say anything? Real quick? You're welcome to. You're public. Yeah, absolutely.
Just so that Jen, Representative Hill sees that I'm here. Hi, Representative Hill. Long time no see. But I'm just here to, to observe and listen and just show support for the township based off of some of the discussions we've had on the city level as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate you being here.
Okay.
I think we're good. Did you have any questions for us or anything you want us to do?
Well, yeah, I am looking forward to getting those comments and, and your write-up there. And thank you for these list of concerns. I do hope that we can find a way to do those in-person meetings there in your township hall. I always thought those were terrific when Senator, or Senator, Rep. Benzi and Senator McBroom invented them. So I'm hoping we can find that time again going forward on, you know, Mondays and Fridays when we're back in district. Right now, this Zoom, I really appreciate, this was a great way to meet with everybody. And I really, really again, thank you for your time and your service to our communities.
You, too. You, too. Thanks to both, Jennifer.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yep. Good night.
Bye-bye.
Any other board member comment?
She feels, she's got the word of what we, what we're talking about. So that's all we can do is move forward.
we can do is move forward and that.
Yep, I hope so. Trying to be diplomatic, not be too forceful. So our next meeting is tomorrow night, right back here at 6 o'clock, regular board meeting.
5:30.
5:30.
Yeah, sorry.
I'll be at 6, okay?
Yeah. Nothing else? Okay, we don't even need a?
6:56, we're done then.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
You lost out.